Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, December 19th, 2023 Business Meeting of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum. All council members are present. We are moving right on to the approval of tonight's agenda. I need a motion.
I'd like to move for the approval of the last agenda for our Mayor Cheryl Selby. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We have an agenda which leads us to special recognition, item 2A, and that is recognizing the 2023 Washington Governor's Smart Communities Award for the Armory Creative Campus. At this time, it's my honor to bring forward Stephanie Johnson, and she will be introducing other people as well. I had Valerie as well.
No, actually, just me.
Not just you.
It'll just me.
Small but mighty, but hello. Yeah.
So, thank you, Mayor Selby, on this historic day, and members of council. I'm Stephanie Johnson with Olympia Parks Arts and Recreation, and I'm delighted to be here today to introduce Anne Fritzl, actually, from the Department of Commerce, to present the 2023 Washington Governor's Smart Communities Award for the Armory Creative Campus. And actually, do you want to jump in? I'd like to introduce Valerie Roberts, who is the Armory Building Manager.
Thank you.
Thank you. I almost missed it. Hello, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Selby, and members of council. I'm going to tip this up. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Valerie Roberts. I am the Armory Building Manager, and it sounds like Stephanie was doing a really great job announcing this award that we're going to receive. So, I'll start again, pardon for the repeat. In 2022, the City of Olympia staff and Framework Cultural Placemaking co-created a community-led concept plan to launch the Olympia's Historic Armory into a creative campus. This will be a space for arts, education, economic development, community development, and equity initiatives through the arts. Today, the City of Olympia and Framework Cultural Placemaking are receiving a 2023 Governor's Smart Communities Award from the Washington State Department of Commerce for those planning efforts. This award program recognizes local school governments and their partners for exceptional land use planning and development. The Community Visioning and Concept Plan lays out the foundation to repurpose the historic armory in the City of Olympia for continued community benefit and transforming it to a public arts center. After engaging over 6,500 community stakeholders in to develop this vision, the new arts center will meet a longstanding goal of Olympia's comprehensive plan. This plan will help guide the armory project over the course of the next several years as we work to update the facility to its future intended use and find community arts nonprofit partners who will help transform this 1939 armory into a new arts center for the City of Olympia. The primary staff member leading this project was our arts program specialist, Angel Nava. Angel worked tirelessly to lift this amazing project off the ground and did it with a thoughtful, community, and equity-centered approach. Angel has been with the city since 2016, and in addition to this project, has led the city's Arts Walk event and other arts programming, growing everything that she touches and impacting the community through thoughtful, community-focused arts programming. She is not able to accept this award tonight, so I will be doing it for her, but I did want to specifically mention Angel Nava because of the incredible work that she has done to take an empty building and see what it can be and listen to the community and see what they see in it as well. And with that, I will welcome Anne Fritzl from the Washington State Department of Commerce. To say a few, please.
Thank you, Valerie. Good evening, Mayor Selby and members of council. I'm delighted and honored to be here to represent Department of Commerce and bring you this award.
Is it worth?
Admire it. On behalf of Governor Jay Inslee and Commerce's Director, Mike Fong, I'm pleased to present this Governor's Smart Community Award to the City of Olympia. It highlights governor's commitment to preserving and protecting Washington's desirable quality of life and recognizes the hard work of our communities, residents, and local officials to ensure we have a clean environment, equitable access to amenities, and high-quality, affordable communities, all the attributes that make our great state a wonderful place to live. This specific award highlights smart projects with the goal of recognizing successful achievement of governmental project which implements a local comprehensive plan. And as I heard, this has been in the plan for decades, so it's so exciting to see it come to fruition. I congratulate you on the Olympia Armory Creative Campus Concept Design and Visioning Phase Project. It addressed all of our award criteria, from carrying out that documented community objective to innovative and thorough public participation. It's a model for other communities to the benefit of arts and culture and collaborative planning, and it provides strategies and a physical design for bringing this facility to life. On behalf of Governor Inslee, thank you for your commitment to strengthening the whole region, for your vision for this project, and your work to guide it into the future. Also, a special thanks you to city staff, officials, and volunteers involved in the project, and to the consultants that supported planning for this visionary facility. Congratulations.
All right. Do we have a... We have some time for council members' response or any comments from the dais. Everyone's looking at me. So, thanks, Valerie, and before that, Stephanie Johnson. As you noted, this vision started, you know, decades ago, and so with the hard work of our legislative district supporters and this council also supporting taking on 1936 building? Yes.
39, yeah.
Yeah-ish. We will have what will become a community hub and a regional hub, actually. So, it also builds on the community support of that building. It held many events previous to us coming into ownership that brought communities together. So, yeah, the energy in that building's good, and we're going to just carry that on. So, thanks, Valerie, so much for your stewardship.
Yes, thank you so much.
Yeah, have a good evening. All right, so we are on to public comment, and nobody has signed up for public comment, either remotely or in chambers. And if I were just more generous at this point, I'd say, anybody want to come up and talk, but I'm not going to do that. We are just going to move on to the adoption of the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Any question, comments, or polls?
I would like to poll item 4G for separate actions, so I might register my dissent.
Excellent. So, we are going to adopt the consent calendar without item 4G, and then we will take a vote on item 4G. So, all in favor of adopting tonight's consent calendar minus item 4G, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed. All right, so now we're going to vote on item 4G. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed.
No.
All right. Motion passes for item 4G with one dissenting vote. We are now on to other business, and item 6A is going to be led by our Strategic Communications Director, Kelly Purse-Brossit, and we are going to talk about the upcoming council vacancy, recruitment, and application process.
Metta Mayor, it's such an honor to be able to do this last presentation before you. Council members, for the record, my name is Kelly Purse-Brossit. I'm your Strategic Communications Director. The work before you is around filling Position 6, which will be vacated in a couple of weeks by the Mayor-elect Payne, and council is responsible for filling that position, appointing to it. So, let's start with a reminder of the process and the timeline here. So, we opened for applications, to receive applications, on November 29th after the certification of the November election, and we closed that application process out last Friday on December 15th. Council received 16 applications. At that time, staff reviewed the applications for residency requirements and all met the requirement. We are then entering the screening stage, followed by January 2nd will be devoted to review of the application and determining who council will interview. Monday, the 8th, will be focused on interviewing those candidates, and then on the 9th, the very next day, the appointed person will be seated in Position 6. So, this is what it looks like in graphic form, just moving right along, and it feels that way as well. So, we are now at the screening portion of the application process. There was a consideration of forming a subcommittee to screen applications based on the number received. A proposed screening process was discussed at agenda setting today, and it's before you up on the screen. That would be to individually screen applications. The 16 application staff would provide evaluation matrices and scoring sheets, and then council, each council member can send their scores to staff who will compile them for attachment as a compiled list in the January 2nd sheet, staff report, so council can review the compiled scores and the application as a body on January 2nd, and that's what this is about. So, that's how January 2nd flows. Council reviews as a body, and then you would come out of that process with a slate of candidates to invite for interviews. On the 8th, council will confirm their, well, council's confirmed their interest in using ranked choice voting, the voting method that was used in 2020. Fair Vote Washington has agreed to provide the overview of the process in Bullet Point 1 on January 8th, and not 28th, the 8th, we want to get it done, and to facilitate the actual voting process on the 8th as well. The interview process would, as a body would work, Mayor Payne, at the time, will manage the process, split it into two different groups of interviews. You can ask, you can require the candidates to limit their time, their answers, we can use a timer for that. You then go into an executive session to discuss candidate qualifications, and from there come out for an open public meeting to discuss, deliberate, and vote. Thurston County Auditor Mary Hall has offered a member of her staff to preside over the voting process as she did in 2020, and the new member would be on the dais with you on the next day, January 9th. So, next steps at this point, council currently has electronic copies of the applications. Printed versions of the applications are in your boxes upstairs. It would be, we need to confirm if you want to go with the proposed application screening process tonight. If so, then evaluation matrices that are in your packet, you can let me know if that, those points, those common points where you can all evaluate separately and come together and discuss if there's anything you want to change on that. And should you agree with the proposed screening process, I can email you the scoring sheet, and I'll also interview, I'll also email you the draft interview questions you guys used last time, so you can consider those and then deliberate on the 8th about what questions you want to use based on that. So, any questions?
Thank you, Kelly. We've been through this a few times in the last eight years, so there is some history. So, I would take some feedback from Councilmember Parchley, followed by Mayor-elect Payne.
That is a good sound. So, my question, I just want to make sure I was clear. The sheets that you're going to hand out that we'll be ranking will be in the packet so the public will be able to see that part of it. I just feel like, you know, as much as it might be nice to hide, it's not.
Yes. Yes, all of that would be in the packet.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And you said the questions, because I remember when we appointed my seatmate to my left, that we went through the questions before the night we decided, so we had them. Are we going to have those as well in the packet, some sample questions?
Yes, my intent is to have them, to email them with you, to you with the scoring sheet so that you can have them and be prepared to talk about them when you guys come together on, I guess, the 2nd.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Payne.
Yes, thank you, Kelly. I just had a question in terms of process. So, are we, when are we determining how many applicants we're actually going to interview?
That would be on the 2nd, when you're looking at your score, your combined scores, and the kinds of questions you would, is how many, who, how many?
Okay, that was going to be my next question, is does the scoring determine who makes it to the next phase? Okay.
And that would be, that's part of your process, how you want to manage the scoring.
It won't necessarily determine it, but it'll give you a guideline for maybe where you want to do the cutoff, and then people can advocate for somebody strongly if they want, put them up on the list.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Wen.
I have just two quick questions, Kelly. This is in person, is that correct?
Yes, you determined that at the last meeting we had this conversation. You said you, the council said they wanted to interview in person.
Okay, thank you. And then also for interview questions, I can't help but think, so the January 2nd meeting, we're going to formulate the questions. I love having a big discussion with the council, and also, what's to say for folks knowing what all the questions are?
Well, I'm going to give them to you, and you guys can decide how you want to handle it, but I think, you know, you can do it by, we can number them if you like, and just speak of them, speak about them in terms of numbers, or we can do that.
Got it. Thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Madron.
On the 2nd, do we have other things on our agenda, or is it just this?
Pulling up my other agenda here.
I love that you're not looking at me.
Yeah, we have, sorry, we have a couple other items on your agenda, so on the 2nd. So, we've got a swearing-in ceremony for three of you at the beginning. We've got a poetry reading from the poet laureate, and then we've got approval of the retreat agenda, which should be fairly quick, and then this item.
Okay, so we do have some business items. I ask because this sounds like a really good conversation for us to sit around a table on. It's, you know, the more collaborative-focused discussions, you know, are harder to do from the dais, easier for all sitting around the table, but it might, I don't know if it's possible to, you know, think about seat configuration and that, considering that there's also things that we need to formally approve, but might be more too challenging, but just thinking about it.
Anyone else? All right, sounds like, do you have what you need, Kelly?
Are you guys comfortable with the proposed approach?
Yes.
All right.
Thumbs up.
I have what I need. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, takes us on to item 6B, which I think Kelly's also our lead on, which is the 2023 Year-End Highlight reel, the highlight reel.
You're going to see a lot of me.
So, each year, Kelly and her staff compose an amazing composition of a year's worth of work. And this year, you said it's under three minutes?
It's under three minutes. The work wasn't under three minutes.
No.
But, but we were able to kind of, you know, sum it up and about that.
That's impressive. Thank you. Nice. I see how you did that. You put four frames in one screen.
Yes.
Yes, that's a lot.
We had to pile it on, and I think there's something...
I think after council gives comments, I have a little gift for you if you have, council has any other comments.
Any comments regarding that amazing compilation? Just thumbs up. All right, so City Manager, Jay Bernie, where's your elf?
So, as, I don't have a microphone, so hopefully you can hear me. So, as is tradition, I have a little gift for all the council members, just on behalf of all the staff. We just want to thank you for all of your contributions to this community, and your really hard work, so thank you to all of you. So, I got something for each of you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank my wife who bagged them out.
Yeah, great, we're having...
Yeah. You have your game this year, Jay. Thanks, Renee.
Thank you.
All right, so we are now ready to move on? Or did you have any other comment?
I do not. Not on this one.
We're just speeding through this. All right, so item 6C, which is farewell remarks from the City Council and outgoing Mayor Cheryl Selby. That's really weird to read. So, I think we have another highlight reel?
Yeah, so we're going to kick off festivities number two to honor Mayor Selby with a brief tribute video, followed by, I think, some comments from your seatmates. Nope, you're good, go ahead, Kelly.
Got ahead of me.
Let her roll.
I think we're ready. Oh, God, the hair. I want to thank Susan Grisham for taking some of the slides I gave you and some other slides that you got and making, telling a really fun story. So, thank you, and it has been fun, it has been fun. So, thank you, much gratitude. I, what are we supposed to do now? All right, so farewell remarks from council members? All right. Yeah, Mayor Tim Gilman.
If I may, I will kick it off with a collective thank you, appreciation, and we have a little token, and I just, I'm just going to briefly say it first. There were several things said in the earlier reception about a person who showed up all the time, no matter what we were facing or how much uncertainty we were facing to walk into a room, and a person who we always knew where she stood, so valuable as you're trying to make decisions together, and always ethical and always graceful. It's just been super valuable to have you here, and that's through some pretty difficult decisions, a global pandemic, and huge culture and arts victories, through a lot. So, we don't want you to forget how good that gavel feels.
Do I have my own?
Yes. And I think Susan may be making her way.
Oh, my gosh.
So the gavel will last, but in this moment, we also wanted you to enjoy this appreciation.
This is so awesome. Now I don't have to steal yours, Dante. It's going to go missing. Oh, wow. And it's customized. 2013 through 2023, Mayor Cheryl Selby, Olympia City Council. Thank you guys so much. Oh, lovely. All right. And then, oh, my goodness. Thank you for your 10 years of dedicated service to the people of Olympia. Your colleagues, Clerk Danny Dante Jimmly-Selby. Thank you. Thank you so much. All right. You're speaking for everybody?
No.
Oh, I was like... That's great. Thank you for spearheading that. All right. This is hard to see people, so I'm going to put it behind me. Thank you. All right. Got one last shot at me, you guys. Come at it. Councilwoman Madron.
One last shot?
Yeah.
Well, I was thinking about what I wanted to say this evening, and in all the time I've known you, since when you first were running for Olympia City Council. And I think that what I kept coming back to is the, how you represent the capacity of a person to learn and grow and, you know, and change your mind on things and change your heart on things. Because when I first met you, you were a big supporter of Capitol Lake.
That's true.
Along with many people in the community as well. You represented a voice on that. And I remember having a conversation with you when you told me about how you changed your mind on that issue. And I think about how people change their minds and change their hearts and like, you know, you could have all the data in front of you and all of the science, but when there's emotion wrapped into an issue, like that's, there's got to be a change of heart too, right? And you, you talked to me about, you know, where you live, right there on the water, and having this moment where you felt really connected to the land and the water right there. And, and you knew that there was just one path forward. And that was the path that, that honors not just past generations, but future generations as well. And, and since then, you have done what, what a mayor needs to do, and that is really represent the city on this issue. You have been a steadfast supporter of restoring the DeChutes Estuary, and that has helped the entire community turn the corner on this issue. And so that was when I first met you, and then I saw you yesterday. There was a, there was a press event for the DeChutes Estuary, the very first on-the-ground project. They're doing some core samples there. They had a big old drill and everything. And it was, it was, you, you got to represent us in this first actual project to move forward on the DeChute Estuary. And I could just see how proud you were of Olympia, and I was so proud of you. And you said, "Free the DeChutes."
That's a direct Madron quote.
I rub off on her. But all that is to say is that you really represent the ability of a person to, you know, to have that change of mind and change of heart, to take in a lot of different opinions. And then when you know what's the right path to go, the right direction, and you know, you've had a council and a community behind you, but you really helped lead and move that forward, and I'm just very, very grateful.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I do remember those walk and talks. Councilmember Payne? Oh, no, I'm sorry. No pressure. I was just doing my council report mode. Councilmember Quinn?
Yeah, all good. Oh, I'm going to miss you. I am going to miss you so much. Since the election, and, and just kind of sort of the end of the year, there's a lot of excitement for what's to come, and the transition of mayors and what that'll mean, and the opportunity for new leadership, and been asked for, by folks, even just tonight about, you know, are you excited? Are you excited? And I, and I feel excited. And I feel sad. I feel that it's a bittersweet moment. Civic engagement, not a part of my family's cultural lexicon growing up, not for lack of care, I think just lack of know-how in navigating a system. And so ever, ever since I met you as a, as a either community college or Evergreen student, making coffee in a coffee shop, and, you know, keying into like, what does the city council even do? You've been the face of the council. You've been the mayor. You've been that person around town. And so it's just such the end of a time. You know, it's, I'm also really excited for you to hopefully enjoy more life, you know? And, you know, so I don't mean to be a downer, but I just, just acknowledging the sense of just bittersweet and what this momentous occasion really is tonight. I know that we have gotten a chance in the Community Livability and Public Safety Council Committee to sort of shower you with, with warm wishes and fond thoughts. So I'll be brief. Some of the things that I will miss most about you is the difference in the specific perspective that you bring. I think that there will be a gap on the council after you leave. You represent a lot of different voices in the community. And Mayor Pro Tim's right. You, you know exactly where you stand, and I really respect that. And you are just amazing at taking crap and coming back the next day. Coming back the next day like nothing happened, and we're ready to move on, whether it's disagreement with colleagues about, you know, if certain things should go forward or other things that have happened, being, being targeted, being attacked sometimes in the community. But you just keep coming back, and you look great doing it. And that is a sense of resilience and a strength to keep going. And once we've made a decision as a body, you represent us. You continue carrying it out, and I think that is so respectable and so important. And then I guess finally, but definitely not lastly, I'll say that the council committee that we both serve on is the one that appoints interviews and appoints all of the city's advisory groups. I mean numerous boards, commissions, and committees, and those interviews are late, late nights. They're special meetings. Sometimes it seems like a subcommittee meeting. And as much teasing as you get for, you know, moving everyone along and being strict with time, you give the time. You really take the time to make sure that we've had a fair and thorough process. And you, even, even after countless interviews, you, you find the, the humanity to just acknowledge, you know, how scary it can be sometimes to put your hat in for, for a city's advisory process, to be a part of the planning process. And you are so kind to each one of those applicants and interviewees and, no matter how they interview, so encouraging. And I just, I really appreciate you. I will miss you. I, I know that you'll be in the community, probably working on something else. Probably have some other things up your sleeve. I don't know. You're very strategic. You will be very fondly thought of and very deeply missed.
Thank you. I do want to speak to a couple of your comments. The one about taking crap and coming back for more the next day. That comes from being a single mom of teenage daughters.
I'm there right now.
God, put that in there. We're all the girls. And then the other one about really being respectful of people who put their, themselves out there in a process like that. It's because I did that. And it was so intimidating. And I remember it's like, oh, my gosh. It's like, you're going to be okay. Just, just relax and just do your best, kind of thing. So thanks for, for that. But it's because I lived that experience. So, all right. We done? Nope. Councilmember Payne?
I'm trying to practice speaking last. I know I got to get used to that. But I, you know, you have been such an inspiration to me personally. I have been following you, not in a weird way. It sounds weird. But I have been following you for years before you even knew who I was. And I've watched you over the years. I've watched you start out, you know, your transition from council member to mayor and what that was like. And I remember it well, going through the whole appointment process and seating clerk. You know, I, I remember that. And, and to watch you now just assume the role has just been incredibly inspiring and also an honor as a community member and as a council member. I, there is, there is one thing I think that we share in common. There's a mantra that you always say, and it's, it's governance over ideology. And I think that you, you certainly have met the mark and stayed true to those words. I think that's so important for our leaders. And, and one example, I think of, of how you've done this is with the COVID-19 pandemic. I remember you posting a photo of you on Facebook, and I think you said it was a gift to you or something, but it was a mask, and it said, "Madam Mayor." And I remember feeling really proud, because at that time, we had leaders all around the country. They were not listening to the science, not listening to their state's leaders. And so we see that our state's leaders, like governors and our president, get recognition, you know, for how things went during that time, but it's so important for our local leaders to be acknowledged as well. And I want to thank you for playing a part in saving the lives of people in our community during that time. It does not go unnoticed. You know, I, there's so many examples of, you know, how you have, in a lot of ways, just been extremely encouraging. The word that comes to mind to describe you for me, since we've been doing sort of an ABC thing tonight, but that word for me is grit, when I think of Cheryl Selby. You have a tremendous amount of courage. You, you step into a space, and again, there is a certain essence that is there that commands respect. I recognize that and appreciate it about you. And I understand how important it is for a community to not just see you in that role as mayor, but to see you in that role as a community member in Olympia. You're a mom. And you, and you talk about that a lot, and that's a good thing, that you do that, because it shows people that you're not somebody sitting on a perch on top of a mountain, making decisions for where we live, but you are, in fact, a member of this community, making decisions that are not only for your personal wellbeing and for your families, but for the rest of us as well. So I know I have big shoes to fill. You know, I said this to you the other night, that, you know, if, if I could just accomplish half of, of what you have, I'll consider it a success. I, I think that you've just done an incredible job, and I'm, I'm standing on some really broad shoulders. And, you know, you, you're already doing the work of caring for the next mayor, and for that, I'm so grateful. And, and make sure that you use the new gavel that you got, so that you can say you used it once when you adjourned tonight.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And when he talks about filling big shoes, I actually have really big feet. Nothing to do with, you know, it's true. It's true. So, it's getting late. Councilmember Parchley?
I, you know, going after Mayor Leck Payne is always tough. And Councilmember Wen, all of you, your words are eloquent. And as the introvert in the crowd, sometimes it's difficult to follow. But here, I'll try. We heard a lot of wonderful, true statements earlier at the reception. I don't want to repeat a lot of those. All my councilmates have said, and probably will say, amazing things about you. But you reminded me of when we first met, which was after a very fateful election in 2016 at a women's political group. And here I was, just an Olympian in Seattle with you. And as Councilmember Wen said, you were so gracious to me. And the thing you were making in our grief in that moment, you handed me one. And that was on my bag all the way through my election. I want to point out that one of the things that we probably haven't said enough of is her grace. She's always told me graceful leadership. And Dante, excuse me, Mayor Leck, pointed out that if you have ever watched any of the meetings over the last eight years, you'll notice that she does not go first. She lets us look like we have something witty or smart or wise to say, or something super poignant on a policy or politics. She lets us say it. That's, that's gracious leadership. She's let so many of us step forward into the position and take lead on policy, so that we can have our moment in the sun, even though she could have done that. That's graceful leadership. And over the six years that I have been on council and honored to serve with her, we have not always agreed, but I have always been proud of her, and I think there's several of us said this, even when she's vehemently disagreed with the council, she gets out there and she is the best champion for the other six of us. You can't ask for a better mayor. You cannot ask for a better mayor, because they, in this form of government, are part of the council. They're the chair of the board, and they only have one vote. And that's a really hard position to be in. And graceful leadership is it. And I'll point out how many crises she had to do that through: homelessness, climate, pandemic, housing crisis, public safety and systemic racism, opioid crisis, the loss of Roe v. Wade, and having to set up a sanctuary city. This is what this amazing, brave leader has taken us through. I will miss you. You are amazing.
Wait, Lisa? Wait, wait, Lisa, you had like a business thing that you want to make sure you didn't, didn't, did before you got done?
I got a report I have to do. It's Lot's report. And I just wanted, just in case you didn't get this, we could start on page one. No, but in all seriousness, I'm supposed to, from Lot, in honor of you, your last meeting, they wanted to make sure, because they heard how much you love Lot, that you got a hard hat. Oh, my goodness. And then you get the beanie cap. And you got some more swag. You get a Lot coffee cup, which by the way, is kind of held by the staff as something that's special. They just appreciate your leadership too, and I was supposed to convey that, but we thought we'd do a little joke in the process.
I love it. I love it. I just need to adjust the size of this hat for my big head now.
There we go.
Thank you. All right. How's my hair? Oh, now I'm going to cry. Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor Selby. Let the cryer go last, that's what we say. You're the third mayor I've said that to, and by far the best. And I mean that from the bottom of my heart. You've been sworn in. You've been sworn out, and tonight, we're swearing you out. For 10 years, I've served with you, and we've had our ups and downs. We definitely have. But as everyone has said, you always come back to grace. You always come back to what's important for the city and the community, and more often than not... important for the city and the community. And more often than not, take that grace and, well, not more often than not, but often, take that grace out into the community, into something that you didn't support. And that's, that's the test of this work. So, you know, it will forever be known now as the Selby era of the city council. So, Taylor Swift has nothing on the Selby era. And I, I hear a lot about Taylor at, at my house these days. But, you know, we've done some amazing things in this city. And, you know, I've, I've, I'm not going to talk a long time. But in, when I've run for city council, I've always been so proud of our staff. Like, we have a world-class city, and it's because of them. It really is. And what was most amazing to me before I came on the city council is the fact that they stayed through some of the things that happened on this dais over the years, to be totally honest. What made me want to run for city council was that world-class city and wanting to preserve it. And with your leadership, this has become a world-class council. When I met with the facilitator for our retreat next month, she could not believe the work that we've spent on each other. And that's because of your leadership. Taking the time and the effort to make a city legislative body about data and outcomes and interpersonal relationship is not something that happens anywhere else in the world. And we do it because we love it. And we love our city. And so, thank you, thank you, thank you for everything. And a little bit of, "I'm sorry," but really, thank you for, for, for being the mom and being the cheerleader for all of us. I, I've learned a lot from you, and I can't wait to see what I learn next.
You, you don't need to. You said beautiful things across the street. I don't...
We've got time.
We got time.
We have all of them, all of them.
We're, we're actually over time, but that's okay.
I knew you were going to say that. I'm going to be quick. I did say most of what I wanted to say across the street, but I just want to end with this. I've sat at this table for 10 years, either in this seat or that seat. And for, and for all those 10 years that I've been either assistant or the city manager, I've looked up to see you at the dais. And it's really hard to imagine looking up in January and you're not sitting there. I think for all of us, I think that's what you're hearing. As excited as I am for Mayor Payne, you were my first mayor as, as city manager. And that, that, that's something I'll always remember. And I said across the street, how much care you put towards the staff and the respect that you show all of us in even the toughest moments, is I'm going to carry that with me for the rest of my life. So, thank, just more gratitude from, from me and from staff. Thank you.
Thank you. So, now I have a brief statement, and then we'll, we'll move on. Thank you again so, so much for all of, of your comments this evening. And I was recently asked to write an article or an op-ed for the Olympia and to recap the last 10 years on city council. And I became a bit overwhelmed. How do you recap that many years into 650 years, 650 words? So, that's 65 words a year. I became so overwhelmed that I gave it to Kelly. So many memories packed into a short period of my overall life. Of course, I need to thank my family, my husband Jeff, my daughters Marta and Gretchen. They have stuck with me through so many highs and some lows of public service. I need to thank the people who mentored me and encouraged me to seek elected office, office originally. I also have tons of gratitude for my campaign teams, including the student interns that worked shoulder to shoulder with me, going to thousands of doors over three campaigns. And next, my coworkers. Many of us have served up here together during one of the, many of the most tumultuous times in recent history. I think all of us will look back on this time and feel bonded for life. There's just nothing you can compare to getting those phone calls and getting those reports and understanding that your, your world as you know it is going to change forever, like it did with the pandemic. It's important to keep in mind, though, that each of us on the dais are here for really a brief moment of time in the arc of, of the city, the history of, over 160 years of the city. Olympia seems to test its elected leaders more than other cities. I've talked to other mayors across the country, and their jaws drop when I tell them about some of the stories here. But each decade brings its own unique challenges. We're not alone in that. I've talked to previous council members, and some of the stories, you know, are also jaw-dropping. But as many in the audience know, we have a council manager for form of government. We are a policy board. And we approve a budget and appoint a few employees. Perhaps most notable is the city manager. What has true lasting impact is the person we select for that job. The city manager runs the day-to-day operations, so our policies rely on the intelligent implementation of staff. I came into office in 2014, and I had the honor of working for six years with one of Washington State's most respected city managers, Steve Hall. That honor was extended as we selected Jay Burney to replace him. The culture of a city starts at the head, and I'm proud to say I've worked at the city of Olympia during the tenure of these two amazing managers. I had a chance to thank Jay's executive team last week, and my message was not only one of gratitude, but of respect. I've had the opportunity and the privilege to be in high-profile positions on many stages over my 10 years, across the state, the country, and even the world. And honestly, most of it wasn't due to my title. It was due to the smart policies adopted by this council and the councils before us and amazing staff support. I can't add much on top of all the words, pictures, and memories that I've, we've already shared tonight. So, I'll leave it like this. Kelly Pressbroseth uses a phrase when she's about to turn off her camera in a Zoom meeting. And it always rings true to me. She says, "I'm going to step back now." And then, she turns off her camera. That's pretty much how I'm going to sum it up. I'm not going to go away, but I'm going to step back now. And with there being no further business before the Olympia City Council, we adjourn.